It's confidential, yes. But what she can do is speak in the public. Do you say, I always should say about that then?
Yeah, but but nobody knows why it's on the agenda.
No, exactly. She does because she poses a problem.
Yes, I know. No, they're going, yeah, that's my coffee.
Lots of meat.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Good.
No, she's very well.
Chris. Huh? Like it's Chris's.
Oh, could be, could be, no, he'd be done about one.
Okay, that's it.
It seems to be.
Eh, well, we've been a little bit down the other day.
You try to really. All right, yeah. If you only phone to us three hours.
So.
Oh, because he 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 is too cheap.
Yeah.
And and the one doesn't know what the other is doing.
That's the only thing.
And they phone on eight.
Yeah.
Well, I heard something. And they land the line where and a broadband and they're on big day. On it, it got so.
Yeah, there's a couple of years.
Right. Right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome for this meeting of the operations development committee on the tenth of September. Here we go. We've got a long agenda tonight, so I'm gonna apologize now if I shorten anybody or whatever. But you know, it's a big, big honor to get to get to will for show though. Uh, you're all very welcome. Any declaration of interest, please?
Yes, Jeff, myself, in confidential session, both, what is it, Rich, sorry?
A personal and.
No, that's the one, thank you very much.
Okay. Public participation. Now, I know Gwen was here, wants wanted to speak in that in that time, but she she decided to sit down in her seat up there.
Don't really want to get it.
Eh?
I've just seen him walking down past the bed house, so.
Oh.
She's with her.
Um. This, the last minute, folks. I know if I might copy it. Page one. Page two. That's it. All okay? Thank you, Teddy.
I accept those, uh.
Well, second it, uh, it's your second is. Any matters arising?
Um, just to say, Chair, the the item altered state, I'm still waiting to hear back from Powers and Floyd Allen to arrange a meeting. Um, and in terms of the T I C and soda factory item, um, the works have now been completed. We're just waiting for some finishing. Um, installation works and then we'll issue a press release when it's all over. But I'm very, very happy of how quickly the works have been completed.
All right. Um, I was quite impressed, if you're honest. So, everybody okay then?
Yeah.
Uh, landed building reports, town hall first. Who's at your pub?
Um.
Anything else to report on town hall that's for?
Um.
Yeah, quite loads, you can't hear very well, I see.
Yeah.
Uh, just to say that, eh, we had a slight issue with the the new toilet upstairs. Eh, a bit of leaking, et cetera, so we had to get eh, all the drain services out to run his camera down to make sure it was okay. Eh, that that's all sorted now, so and eh, the all the aqua props are all done. Um, yeah, so that's how it stands and the mutton belly is the same.
And the mutton belly is sick.
You've got to tweak them every month, you, we'll check them.
Yeah, yeah, when basically every month, we just go, usually on a Wednesday when we do the fire alarms, we'll go around just just to check the aqua pots really. Just make sure that they're still tight.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Um, five to general update, Mr. Paul.
Uh, Paul, this operations.
Yeah, Sam, um, good evening, um. Yeah, it seems a long time since eh, last meeting, to be honest, I had to go back through the diary, et cetera, to remember what's gone on. Um, but yeah, since the last meeting, we eh, obviously had mayor's parade and the community awards. Eh, our side of it, the the operations side, I believe, ran smoothly as as well as could be expected, so I was quite pleased with that. Eh, and to say the names of those who received an award, that's in the process, anytime soon they'll be on the board, so. You know, pr- present place for the future. Eh, we've had V J Day. Eh, the memorial garden with big thanks to the mayor, Nigel Lloyd and Pete Evans, eh, who also said a few words on the day. Eh, which is much appreciated. And then followed quite quick quickly on the Sunday with eh, the anniversary of Paul Thomas's passing in Iraq. Eh, I'm glad to say the family will, I'm sorry, here, were very pleased with how the garden looked.
Yes, indeed, it was.
So, yeah, big thanks to the team on that.
Yep.
Eh, and we're back in the memorial garden, actually this week, eh, we tidied up the garden yesterday, knowing the weather we're gonna come in. I'm hoping we get a eh, a clear day on Friday, cause eh, on Saturday, there is the unveiling of the new memorial bench that Alan Crowe's fundraiser is for. So, we wanna get the bench installed on Friday in preparation for it and just again have another quick run round, so the garden looks as good as it can. For that Saturday. Eh, we had a Stella's book fair, which I look forward to every year. My batteries ruined ever since, but anyway. Um, moving on, playgrounds, eh, this month we'll be doing our quarterly playground checks, eh, we're in September. And following on from the last meeting, I went through the roster reports we've had. And we've already booked in the repairs to be undertaken at the country park. Eh, they're hopefully commencing, we commence in the thirteenth of the October. Eh, I'm still waiting on an engineer's report for the slight repairs up at the Berges Park. Um, and I'm also with the defence of Dolly Valley and I was hoping it'd be done by now, there's been a six to eight week eh, delay on the gate. Um, but I'm glad to say I had a phone call today and they have landed and hopefully all starts tomorrow, weather permitted. Um, and also me and eh, the town clerk eh, looking into potential grants or potentially new equipment and repairs. Spares, et cetera. So I don't know if Mr. Clark wants to say something on that.
Yeah, um, but it's a bit of a tight turnaround, um, and nothing we could bring you to to approve because of the tight turnaround, but Powers have got um. A grant out, and they've got three hundred thousand pounds from Welsh Government to give to um, improving play equipment across Powers. Um, so we'll be making an application, um, where we can apply for up to twenty thousand pounds, um. Application needs to be submitted to Powers by the twenty second of September. So we've kind of worked on the basis that half the money would be repairs and fixing what we need to in in the longer term, things that aren't um. Aren't compliant now, but of course, when they're put installed, it sounds as if they exist. And then the other half looking at more. Um, more potentially equipment in our playgrounds that, you know, as you can see from the consultation results, and people want. More stuff in our playground, so we're seeing what we can afford. But honestly, it's like weddings, you put with playground in front of it and the price just shoots up, so. We we were hopeful that we could put some of that money towards some sort of play skate park equipment, but actually. We couldn't even get one piece of equipment for twenty thousand, um, so we're working on a project then with feathers, so they can explore that further. Um, but you know, and then we'll we'll stick to our playgrounds, but I think we're gonna look at some infant, and maybe most of the most areas the park has most used. There's got the most space that we can put things in, so me and Paul are working on seeing what we can find to put it last.
Okay, any questions?
I'm finished, eh, moving on to the day centre, eh, the heating engineer is organised. Eh, to come in and do the heating controls, which which obviously needs to be doing now the weather's turning. Eh, and the maintenance for the kitchen equipment is booked in for the eighteenth of this month, eh, to be followed by the T R nineteen ducting cleaning. Eh, our defibrillators have all been serviced, eh, pads have been changed where needed. Although we do need a new eh, box for one at Mirey Dray, as it's all cracked and the the front of it's basically bust. Um, so I'm looking into them and also I believe after speaking to Yanto and the town clerk. Eh, we need new containers for the bleed kits, they cannot be kept with the defibrillators, so we're gonna, I was just literally starting to look into them. Eh, over the last few weeks, we've had a few trouble with our vans. Eh, the tipper went into the garage and it was there for about a week. Um, which meant basically doing the bin run, et cetera, in our transit van, which wasn't ideal. And also meant having to handball all the bins out at the skip as well, which obviously extended the time of doing it. Um, and just today, um, the transit has gone to the garage with a battery fault. Which apparently is a common thing with the make of vans, although it's a bit over my head when it comes to vehicles. And we're hoping to get that back tomorrow stroke Friday. So, yeah, it's been a bit of a bit of a game with losing a vehicle. Um, but it does show the benefit of leasing eh, the vans as basically the cost of the repairs for both vehicles. Is between four and five thousand pounds. So, just thought I'd mention that. And that's basically off me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Chris.
Yeah, can I just say, um, I'm respectful that the the team look when they go to eh, the garden, whether they go to the garden or whether. Where it's the Lord Mayor's Parade, um, I actually turned up down in the garden in t-shirt and shorts. And I was so ashamed of myself, honest to God, I I sat myself out of the way. But eh, the the team looks.
Yeah.
Absolutely respectful and top notch, and it won't happen again.
Change, Chris.
Okay, can I just say one thing? Can we have a a an update on the skate park? Where are we with that now?
Um, in terms of the skate park, um, if you recall, I'm thinking off the top of my head, but in June. The committee decided to pause the project because of our lack of funds. Um, and work instead with partners to deliver some sort of provision beyond people, which we have been doing. Um, I'll give you an update more in confidential session later.
Sorry?
I'll give you an update confidential session later.
Okay.
Can I just come back on the skate park, eh, eh, Chair, um. Several years ago, Richard, there was a firm that came in and offered to put the skate park in. That was all tested, that was all eh, above board and everything, and pretty well for nothing. I don't know whether they disappeared off the off the earth or or what's happened to them, but they were going to design it around the the area that we had. And put skate park in.
At free?
For nothing, for, I believe it was for nothing.
I I think I've learnt this life, nothing is for free, but.
No, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, no, I I'd be, if you can remember the name, it'd be.
Yes, okay, I'll I'll get in touch with Kim and I'll I'll ask her if she's gonna remember.
I'll explain a bit more about the skate park afterwards.
Thanks, Richard.
Well, you know, things have things have progressed.
Time to zone.
It's always Saturday, you know, don't know.
All right, great.
Well.
Okay. Right? Go.
You'll pay me, Chair.
Okay, I leave a second question. Anything else, folks? All end of season works.
Eh. I've stopped the.
Yeah, so um, you've got, so basically, um, end of season works, it's always, it's always happened. Um, in terms of the ice of Dray, looking at the S T R report, which the council gets a promotion during the year, um, we have a budget of twenty thousand pounds. And um, fracture regs require eh, for contracts greater than one thousand, um. That club where I first try and obtain three fixed price quotes, we've tried our hardest. And you've got two quotes in front of you this evening, got company A and company B. Um, and basically, it's um, for you to pick which one we go with, um, we have previously used company A for. Consider a long time on the ball.
Yes, we have, yeah.
You can see the varying levels of quotes, the budget, as I said, is twenty thousand, um. Yeah.
Now, eh, just to say as well on this, eh, if if, in an ideal world, we would go for the ex- the expensive one. Now, obviously, I know that probably can't happen, eh, but just to be aware that we are missing the works last year. We have now bald patches coming on various pitches, eh, so you've got an option of. The the cheapest one is basically a sand veitie drain fertilizer. Your quote two is you that again, but with overseeding the rugby pitch and the rugby pitch only, as it's obviously the most wearing game. And the third one is eh, overseeding, I think it's two pitches, is it? That's it, so there will still be one pitch that isn't overseeded.
Says three pitches.
It says two times football, one, don't we?
I'm going two football and one rugby.
Oh, that's even better then, yeah, so I I'm going off my memory here. So, yeah, so it's overseeding all of them, overseeding the rugby pitch, overseeding all of them.
Nick?
Um, I hope I've got this right, I don't really do finance, but um, did you, what was the?
It's it's twenty thousand, um.
I know, the two quotes, one is almost sixty thousand.
No, no, you 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 pick with one, so which one is quote, what is the core?
Oh, it's one of the three.
One of the three.
So, the the first quote.
The first quote is for seventeen, yeah, first quote is for seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty, second quote is for nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty. And the third quote is to twenty one thousand, three hundred and eighteen. And then basically what we've done then is we've taken those quotes, we've got other companies and said, what, can you, can you match this price? And they've, they've come up with, they've come back with seventeen thousand, nine hundred, nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty five, or twenty one thousand, six hundred and.
Like I said, total cost for the one is almost like fifty nine thousand?
No, no.
What have I got wrong then? I thought I added the.
You're you're adding up the.
You're adding the three together, yeah. These are these are three different quotes for the change you have.
Got you, sorry, my mistake, I apologise.
So where do you wanna go, folks?
I would respect that he has pulled one, but it's been in his.
Um, again, in an ideal world, it would, I would go for the most expensive because all the pitches do need it. I understand that fine, um, obviously, money is a, an issue. Eh, as to regards of the contractors, again, they're both reputable tradesmen, um. The only issue eh, difference is the one quote, he has done it for the last part to six years, if not a bit longer, to be fair. And he's local.
You trust him?
Oh, yeah, with that, yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question, eh, Chair, um? What income are we getting back off these pitches, eh, Richard?
Well, off the top of my head, um, there is at least three thousand in the budget for recreation club rent. There's other miscellaneous income in that budget, but we're not, we're not talking. Couple of that, you know.
We're nowhere near.
No, four thousand, I think.
We're we're nowhere near, and we're losing that much every year?
Um.
Too much.
Well, it's ridiculous.
Uh, I don't quote me on these figures, I want to say a hundred and fifty two thousand or a hundred and fifty four is what. The net cost is between the two, so between income versus expenditure, that's what the precept pays for, basically. Hundred, hundred and fifty something, I guess.
Michelle.
Thank you. The pitch that's not going to be done, when will it need to be done?
It will go into next year, this time next year. This is the toss up, you have a risk losing the standard of the pitches. Or you 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 do what's needed to be done, which is fertilizer, grass seed, averting draining in the sand.
By the time next year comes, the price could have gone up anywhere.
Certainly could. This is the issue, things like fertilizer and that, I've got through the roof.
The the main town pitch though is is eh, is monitored by F A W, is it?
Eh, no, we have the S T R I block come once a year to inspect our pitches and give me a plan of action of what works we should be doing. Which I did present to council, I had a few months back.
Yeah, okay.
And actually, this year, you remarked that they are one of the best locally maintained, local authority maintained pitches in the UK.
And basically, you just keep doing what you're doing.
That's great, Richard.
Oh, it's fantastic.
But it's the amount of money that we we are having to.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Issues abound, blow into these places.
Yeah, look, it's it's a, it's a political decision that you have to what level you subsidize and affect you subsidize the clubs, because. At the end of the day, um, the clubs basically get for, they get full for full time scrimsman. But they do get a considerable amount of staffing resource that we put into it, and that and that's what makes up that figure, and majoritively makes up that figure.
In in that figure you you quoted, Richard, is the bowling club in in that vigor as well?
Yes, it forms part of the rent income.
Are we still losing on the bowling club?
No, we don't, we don't pay.
The bowling club do their own left themselves, see, but we do, we don't touch the bowling greens.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
Who's paying for the sub for the bowling club?
We we don't.
Hmm?
We don't.
We don't know. Okay, Sally?
Just a little one from my brainstorming here. Um, when will we receive grant money for what's happened on T I C? For soda panels, we get that grant money back.
We've had it.
We've had it.
We've had one installment.
Right.
I get the other, I get the other installment when the project's finished.
Right, okay. Could we not earmark this for pictures?
It is earmarked for the pictures. There's twenty thousands in the budget, it's literally for this purpose. It's in end of season work, so so when you set the budget last year, you specifically put in your budget twenty thousand for end of season works. If you recall the previous year, you didn't spend it and you spent it instead. Six grand went on the bowling club fence, which they paid back. Or we, some portion of the fence in there, and then they paid, they paid back. And then the other portion went to commission the continual building survey that um, Sir Shapson Jennings did in December, in in January. So you never spent end of season works last year, so we missed a year in end of season works, which is why it's probably more important this year. That we have some sort of end of season works, because you've already missed one.
May I suggest that we go with point three? Because if we don't do that, it's gonna quadruple next year and it'll cost us even more. So if we can find a little room within the budget to do that, I I agree, it should be done properly, yeah, correctly. So.
Yes.
Mr. Bear?
Uh, thank, thanks, Chair, um, yeah, I I I agree with Sal, I I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it properly, I I'd. Probably go with point three, but I'm wondering, would it, wouldn't it make more economic sense to do all four pitches at the. Same time rather than wait until next year to do one, because it.
Basically, that does cover all the pitches, apart apart from the junior kiddies pitch.
Okay.
Which, to be honest, it's it's little ends and, yes, it's not ideal, but the pitch doesn't get as much hammer as. Wolfpool Rugby Club, for example, and certainly, it was hard to tell the last few weeks, obviously with the weather being beautiful. But certainly with this rain, the the fields have greened up a hell of a lot. And when we draft pass, you can literally see patches in the ground now where there is no grass.
Yeah, no, I I walked around them on eh, with, over the weekend, um, yeah, it's all looking. Pretty dry around there, isn't it?
And the coast of season for the football and rugby has literally just started, one or two games at most, so they've got the whole winter to go here.
Hmm.
Nick?
Very briefly, Chair, can I just say that I think the condition of our pitches, as Paul has, I've talked to Paul about a lot of it. Uh, is a great level of kudos for Welshful Town Council, we've got such fantastic playing pitches. And they are a tremendous community provision, as football and rugby are getting bigger and bigger with ladies football and ladies rugby. And there's kids teams and all the rest of it, so I I think it's something we've gotta carry on with.
Yeah. Sally?
Just chuck this one in, Chair, don't we claim that back?
Yeah, we do, so so. It's twenty one thousand, three hundred and eighty.
There you go.
So your one thousand and three hundred and eighty pounds I've spent.
Yeah. I I I mostly accept quote three, Chair.
Well, I I can tell you, certainly football pitches, ours are the best in Montgomeryshire. I'm worried about that, and probably there's one other in mid Wales. That would equal to one where it it could be slightly better than ours or or slightly worse than ours.
There's a reason we get neutral cup finals every year.
Yeah.
Look, the the guy that did the S T R report, he used to work for, was it Motherwell?
He's done Woodford, eh, Motherwell, Hibernian, he's done Worryfield, he's, yeah, he's worked on some of the top grounds.
They're not saying that our pitch was at the same standards, and actually for the level of. Quantity that our pitch goes through, he says it was remarkable, because of course, their pitches are treated like gold dust, aren't they? And they play on the one, and that's it, but our pitches play on all night.
Yeah.
Estelle, last one?
That's exactly what I was getting at. Do the lot now, or pay for the lot now, because our reputation stands on this.
Yeah.
We can't lose our good face, we can't.
Okay, well, you've got three choices.
David.
Oh, sorry, David. David France?
Yes, oh, thank you, Chair, I was only gonna quickly note that it's important that, while we may not be making a fortune from. This endeavour as a council, the tremendous social value that it obviously brings to the people of the town and that it's definitely. Worth its weight in gold in terms of what we do spend to maintain our, yes, eh, excellent pitches. So, yeah, I'm happy to take a steer from the operations manager on on what, which quote's the best one, but if we feel like we're moving towards quote three, I'm happy to back that.
And just just before you do vote, just, you you just need to. And just, just before you do vote, just, you, you just need to note that it is over budget, just remind you of that, man.
It's not a question for you.
I know, I just, it's my duty to tell you.
Yeah, I, I know that.
Get some, come back in there or something, I think it's a good job. Okay, who wants to make a proposal?
I'm going to propose it.
Sally's proposed, and it's self-seconded.
So you need a vote.
In favour, please? That's unanimous.
So that's quote three for company A? I give all.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't forget you've got Ben on there as well.
Oh, Ben, Ben.
Yeah, it's fun.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Item nine, no, where am I? Item five point four, dog control orders, Mr. Park.
This is just, this is just to note, so you have the most up-to-date information, that we've done a considerable amount of work over the summer, unpicking a lot of stuff that is historic in the council, you have learned a lot over the summer. And to note that the council did adopt dog control orders back on the twenty seventh of October, two thousand and ten. However, um, at the time, the council had the powers under the Clean Neighbourhood and Environment Act two thousand and five to do so. However, um, when the antisocial behaviour crime and policing act was passed in twenty fourteen, it revoked the dog control orders you've had, well, it gave you a three-year period in which you could convert that dog control order to a public space protection order and also removed the ability for our level of government to create any future orders. Um, and it wasn't converted in the three years' period, so the dog control order has had, has now expired. Which means that we do not have any legal mechanism to prevent dogs from fouling or being off-leash, on-leash on our places that were controlled by the dog control. There's nothing we can do about it. The, the law, the, the government changed the law.
Michelle.
Thank you. Just to quickly, I was just going to say, we willingly let it expire. We, we couldn't do anything when you were going up to people whose dogs had fouled and said, will you pick that up? And supply a bag to them, what's your name, Mickey Mouse, where do you live, on the moon? And then you can F off, that's what we were guessing, so.
Yeah.
Just.
So thi- this is just the completeness, the complete circle, because I know it's been, it's been highlighted in the press recently and that, you know, dogs fouling on, on sport pitches, you know, not just in Marshfield, across, across areas of North Powers. Um, however, we're not able to issue a public space protection order, but Powers County Council is. And I don't know, would it be a good idea if we wrote to all the other, um, town region councils also having this issue? And sort of banded together and asked Powers if they would consider making a P S P O on the sports pitches, which would prevent dogs from fouling on them. Um, I, I don't know how likely it is, they've, basically Powers have never issued a P S P O and and North Powers police aren't, aren't cleaning them, but it, it's not an outbid, but it could be something that we could at least ask for, because it is, it is getting some traction in other places in North Powers.
Folks, what do you think about that one?
That, my concern is, Chair, that, you know, who's going to please it? You can put signs up, but the sort of people who let their dogs foul the football pitch, aren't going to take any notice of a sign.
P S P Os are enforced by, um, the, the local authorities, so Powers and the police. Um.
But resources-wise?
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I don't stand how they enforce.
Mr. Bear?
Ye- yes, how effective it would be is debatable, isn't it? But the fact that, that there is a prohibition and there are signs pointing that out to people may lessen it a bit, even though it's not very effective when it comes to enforcement. So, I.
Who wants to make a proposition, anybody?
You don't, you don't have to.
You looked into it, Rich?
I, I've looked into the element of the dog control orders, but I, I, you know, I look, I've hit the block of P S P Os. And it's a, it's massively unfortunate that the UK government decided to get rid of the powers of this sector, they basically, you know, gave us something and then took it away again. Uh, which is frustrating for us now to go to Powers and say, look, will you please do this? But, uh, looking at the, some of the comments online of this issue in North Powers, people seem to want action on it, and maybe it would be a good thing that Marshfield leads the way in, in trying to obtain that action.
It's just a matter of writing a few letters.
It, it, it's literally just writing a few letters.
Let's do it, man. So I think.
Michelle?
I'd like to go with the town clerk's proposal, the, the, we, uh, make inquiries with other, other local authorities and see if we can persuade Powers to put that in place.
Who's going to second us? Sally's seconded on it. Ballin' Peter?
I think you had David France online asking a question.
Yeah, David is on the.
Oh, sorry, David is on, I've just seen three. Who's against?
Against.
Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay, thank you. Bylaws, five point five.
Yeah, again, look, the two items are massively intrinsically linked, um, they were approved at the same meeting on the twenty seventh of October, twenty ten. Um, so the council, to give you the backstory, the council has got a set of bylaws in which it revoked its previous set that were first passed in nineteen fifty-two, that there's a set in nineteen fifty-two which were revoked in twenty ten. You've got the twenty ten set, um, I can't find a definitive sealed copy of them, which means it's incredibly difficult to work out which copy is, is which, um, the minutes of the meeting of that, actually, just saying, um, the, um, bylaws which are held in the town plant's office for inspection, which doesn't massively help for, because I can't find a copy of them. Um, however, there is a draft copy on our website, which means that they're the ones we have to kind of go with. However, um, there is a particular, um, well, I'll explain some of the needs. So the bylaws we have currently around our open spaces, which are issued under the Public Health Act eighteen seventy-five and the Open Spaces Act nineteen oh six. However, um, in negotiations with Powers in reviewing our market agreement for the charter market on the Monday, um, it came quite clear that, uh, as you, as you know, the, the market spaces that we have are in, are in parking spaces on Broad Street. And I posed the question to Powers, well, what are you going to do if someone parks in one of our market trader spaces? And they said, uh, nothing, we don't enforce parking infringement on Mondays because it's your charter. Now, the only way for us to enforce then off-street parking is to, um, get Powers to grant us the powers to do so, and if, and even if they did, we wouldn't have powers of F P M, we'd have to go to the magistrate's court and get a summary. Um, a summary judgment against whoever did it. So, again, enforcement then is incredibly difficult. Um, so the, the proposal again, like, for you this, this evening, is to also look at replacing our existing bylaws that are made on our open spaces. Uh, but time has moved on and there are new things now that are potentially banable. Um, sky lanterns is a massive one, um, for environmental aspects that we may want to include. Um, so I'm proposing this evening, we, we're replacing those existing open spaces bylaws with some potentially new ones. Um, introducing bylaws for regulating our indoor and outdoor markets under section sixty of the Food Act nineteen eighty-four, which would give us then the powers to say, hey, you're parking in one of our market spaces, you can't do this. Um, me and Paul had a, a, a funny encounter with a market trader who rocked up in Newport and, um, then refused to pay his rent, because it didn't make enough, and I'll be too told. Um, onwards, we've since banned him from coming, but again, the, the bylaws would give us the power then to issue if you were on the spot, but, look, I, I'll, I'll caveat this a, a, at the beginning. It may not be that we ever enforce any of these bylaws, but they are a tool in the chest. They're for future-proofing, they give us the powers in the future if we need to. It's a laborious process to go through, but I will, I will crack on. Um, the, the third bylaw, um, looking at introducing, would be around off-street parking places which are controlled by us under section fifty-seven of the Road Traffic Regulation Act nineteen eighty-four. That gives us the powers to regulate the car parks that we come at the own, especially the town hall park back, day centre, Mont Bailey parking and Myser Dray parking. So if the council ever decided to introduce any charging in the future, not saying it is, and this is, this doesn't bind you to do so, you've got the mechanism behind it that allows you then to proceed with that. Um, in particular, the day centre is a, is a vulnerable spot for parking, as we know, that next to hospital and people do nip in and out of there, this would give the council then the powers, if it wanted to, to enforce that provision. Motte Bailey, for example, when we're looking at transforming it in the future, there will be a car park there, so how we regulate that is important. And of course, we know about the parking issues at the back of the town hall. And then looking at introducing, uh, bylaws to regulate the conduct of persons in toilets. The section one hundred and seventeen of the Public Health Wales Act two thousand and seventeen, this is a relatively new power. But as we know, we get vandalism in public toilets, the police won't do anything unless they see a criminal offence on video. This would eventually, this would potentially give us the power to find somebody who was vandalising our public toilets, et cetera, but using a lesser standard than what the police would be doing. Again, it's future-proofing, we may not even enforce them, uh, you know, it, it is looking for the future. Um, there is a particular process to go through in making bylaws, um. I'll, I'll just go through it briefly now, so, um, this is regulated by the local government bylaws, Wales Act two thousand and twelve, which, um, requires a certain number of processes to go through. So the first thing the council has to do is to issue a set of initial written statements for the reasons why they'd be issuing. And then also we have to, um, do a twelve-week consultation period, which is in line with the Welsh Government Statutory Guidance. After the twelve-week consultation period, after the, the response has been analysed, it comes back to council for a final stage where you review the consultation, um, responses, and then decide if you want to, um, go ahead with uh, making those bylaws or not, and if you do, those bylaws come into effect one month after you've made them or a date appointed by you. Um, the default, um, fine level set in bylaws is seventy-five, seventy-five pounds, but you're, you're able to alter that, but you can't go above seventy-five pounds, or you could go a lesser charge if you wanted to. Um, and, and that's it, it's, um, it's basically the first step of a very long process. Um, you're not able this evening to actually, uh, say yes or no, it's, it's basically, it's full, full council. They've got the only power to say yes or no to going ahead with bylaws, but again, a recommendation is committed to them would be ideal, that, um, yeah. Over to you for questions, sorry, it was a long presentation.
Sally?
I have to have it happen, Chair, I think it needs to happen.
Is that a proposal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second it, because, because, Richard said it's future-proofing, isn't it?
Okay, any, any amendments? No? Those in favour? I treat anonymous.
David France, Boris Hande.
David, David Patrick, yeah.
Oh, I'm Ben.
I'm Ben.
Ben, yeah. Well, I see anonymous, Chairman, uh, Subcar.
You're the chairman.
Each is a title of it, yeah. Okay, item six, folks on the agenda, meals on wheels.
Evening all.
My word.
As you can see, it's on the paper in front of you, bought one of these, yeah? This is July and August. We did nine hundred and thirty-five meals, July and August, sixty-one percent of delivery of the meals. And thirty-nine and a half was in hubs.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah. And the income was very well, yeah. And then in August, they had the, the haven was shut one week before.
Yeah, that's really good, it's very well, isn't it?
It's really good, yeah, really good.
Yeah, we're actually, you know, it's good enough to take Harvey Wendy.
We are, yeah.
None's going, start to go back up again, because we had that dip when, uh, no Maldiva happened, so.
It's trying to go back up again now.
Yeah, it's really good.
But the haven has made a big difference over the time.
Yeah, yeah, we work well with Laura, you know, that's true.
Okay, any other questions on that?
No.
You've got the good word, Wendy. Michelle, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Six point two, markets?
Um, just to say that, uh, I won't go into much detail, but, um, to say that all the market stalls besides one, and I filled. And the market cafe, of course, is still empty, but that's on your agenda later, so actually, we're, we seem to be on the curve upwards in terms of the market, um, we had a, a lot of response to the, to the strategic plan consultation about the market and we're planning lots of different things around promotion and, and trying to improve things, um, for the public, to, to actually tell the public the market's there, a lot of people didn't even know it was there, so there's a lot of onus on us to get people in there and, and once they're in there, hopefully, um, can spend some cash. But, well, we seem to be on the up at the moment, which is great, and actually, um, a new trader's just moved in last week, um, occupying one of the biggest spaces, um, you know, I'm going good, doing t-shirts, and actually, they, they decorated their area, it looks really nice down there, so, um, yeah, improvements are always being made and it's great to have new faces in the market. Um, the fruit and veg actually has moved from the front to the middle, which actually we think will help in terms of dragging people into the front door, because at the moment you came to the front door and you had your fruit and veg and you walked straight back out again, but now you can get them to come through the market and experience what else is in there, and the lady then that was next to her, the dried flower stand has, has actually taken the, her unit on. So that's made it bigger as well, so, um, it's going really well.
Okay, Nick?
Can I just comment, the young lady that's taken on what was Cath's stall, the lady, the embroidery lady in the printing, is actually the daughter of one of our present market traders, which is good.
Yeah, that's it.
Good, good. Okay, six three, the hub.
Yeah, this is just an update, I'm, I'm conscious that the hub is in central service and you, you don't tend to get to hear about it in a, in a formal session. And I know Nick is here, so hopefully you can, you can add a bit more to this, but to, to give you some of the data, um, since April to June, um, the hub generated, um, it received two hundred and ninety-three pounds in donations, and we spent about two hundred and fifty pounds on, on moving things running it, and it's, it's not there to make a profit, it's there to offer a warm space and hot drinks and companionships, that's not important.
And baked potatoes.
And they, hey, they're coming back, the famous, famous Howells baked potatoes are, are coming back in October. Uh, visitor numbers was around, um, around forty to forty-five per session, so on, on average, two hundred, two hundred and fifty-three across the period. Uh, we, we're missing a few gaps in the weeks, um, so we need to think of a better way to start off and record the numbers, uh, which we're going to look at going forward. Donations do remain a vital part of the service, um, just to remind you all that one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two pounds does remain earmarked in our accounts for use with the hub, but at the moment, because the donations are more than the receipts, we're not needing to tap into it, so it is sitting there.
May I add?
Yes, Nick.
If we did, um, our sandwich press for making toasties, which, well, I bought from home, basically. Um, after three years was on its last legs. So after discussions with some of the volunteers and some of the other cooks, Morag and a couple of the others, we thought it was prudent to actually invest hub money in buying an industrial printing press, which we did. And it's a brilliant piece of kit. And I'll also add that I was approached yesterday by somebody from a substantial local business. And who said they would like to make a further donation, they've donated before, but there's a bit more negotiation to go on, but there is another donation coming from them.
I have to say, I'm not much of a food critic, and, and I would take this with the humour, I, I had one of the best pizzas I'd ever had on the hub. And I was kindly, I was kindly, I wasn't gifted, I did pay, I did pay my toasty, uh, but honestly, it was, it was fantastic, so, um, and it was, you know, it's nice to chat to, to people, you know, people around the town, you know, I have a fantastic chat at the railways, it's great during my, my lunch interviewing, actually.
Looking at the figures here, that's the summer figures.
Yes.
Uh, in the winter, January, February, March, we were getting, on Thursday especially, we were getting up to eighty odd people through. On a Thursday, a little bit less on a Tuesday, around the fifty, sixty, but we're getting a lot of people coming in.
Yeah, and, 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 look, we're getting the services there as well, um, citizens advice, monthly.
Citizens advice come monthly, and I think popular.
Yeah.
So is, um, the water lady, Lucy, she offers a lot of advice, so, um, yeah. Taking, taking along nicely.
But, okay.
I think, I think we should give our thanks to, um, Nick, Morag, Bill and all the volunteers.
Yeah. I thank you on their behalf.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, item seven, committee finance, what score, why?
Right, it is important that you do look at this as a committee, these are all the areas you're responsible for in terms of the finances. Um, you will note that we are nearly over budget, uh, in income generation for the assembly rooms, which is fantastic. Um, however, we are lacking behind slightly on call exchange, so, um, we'll continue to push that. In terms of overspend, we're slightly overspend on town hall rates, because the figure we actually had back was slightly higher than I'd be budgeted. Um. Whereas, uh, indoor market stalls, we're, we're nearly, nearly at halfway, which is great. Um, and we're not even halfway through the year yet, so, that's fantastic. Other overspends, um, we seem to be overspent on the services budget for, um, recreation. So that includes, that's area your electric, water and utilities for, um, my strain particular. Um, so we need to keep an eye on that one and see what we need to do with that one, all of them, on that one. Uh, in terms of other budgets, it's relatively where you should be for this year, you will note that, that vehicles are the street scene, so, um, page two, bottom of page two vehicles, um, you're nearly closing in on the top of that, and it's only because the council decided to take the tractor on halfway through the year. And it's the pavement steward, the tractor, so, yeah, I'm sure we, you know, it's all that we have. Um, you've got some money left over in budgetary, which you should push a little bit more, what you needed. Um, we're nowhere near spending what we need to on cleaning and materials for toilets, uh, which is great. And, oh, Mont Bailey, of course, um, and that's going to be discussed by Finance and Governance Committee next week, um. It's the works to do the fencing of Mont Bailey, you had a budget of five thousand, and of course, those works cost, um, thirteen. So we overspent by two hundred and seventy six percent, but it's going to be discussed by Finance and Governance next week and to see where that money comes on to plug that gap, because of course it's only the shortfall of eight thousand eight hundred and thirty eight. But other than that, we seem to be pretty much on track where we should be this time of year. But that's great. We'll, we'll, we'll keep plugging the income generation. Again, meals and wheels generation, we're exceeding where we should be at this time of the year, so again, kudos to Wendy.
Tony.
Um, can I just quickly offer me, Chair? In respect to the allotments, we were told when we had Vanessa and Debbie here, that those allotments were full. Now that has come to case that they are not full. So I was wondering where we're at with the allotment switch, really.
On top of my head, because I don't deal with the dates there, the allotments, on Kim's desk. They are, they are empty. There are empty spaces.
We were told they were full.
Particularly at Burgess Lands. As you can see, in terms of a financial perspective, you've exceeded the income target for this year, which is great if they're not yet full, which is great. But look, there is a massive issue with the Burgess Lands in particular. I don't know whether it is back the ground up there. Um, we know that they're there empty and they need to be, we're gonna strip them back when it's a bit quieter around. In terms of the hospital allotments, they seem to be the more popular site.
Yeah, they're full, aren't they?
They're not full completely, but there's a, there's a few spaces left. I'm talking about a few, a few half plots. But basically, again, it's another one on the list that we need to publicise, especially with the increasing number of flats in the town. People haven't got the gardens and actually, I didn't even know before I started, you did allotment, so actually, it's, it's a failure in us. And even other sites have, something I had.
Encroach a people's room.
Yeah, exactly. It's a massive, it's a massive thing.
A little bit, I think.
Yeah, we definitely do. It's, now we've had the branding approved, we can, we can crack on with that.
Lovely. Thanks, Rich.
Anyone else?
I'll answer any questions anyone thought.
Any questions on those events? Okay, folks. Projects and new developments, I debate, Town Hall Transformation.
Okay, so you may be aware that we have had our expression of interest by the National Lottery for this building approved, which we will do, we will do a press release announcing that formally, that the fact that our press of interest has been approved by National Lottery. We're nowhere near getting the money, but it's the first hurdle to get past, which is great. We've now got twelve months from the approval of that, that was back in July, to submit the full bid. We are actually meeting our National Lottery Officer next Friday on Teams to talk about, they had a few questions about how we funded the match funding element, so we're meeting with her on Teams. A lot of time resources for change are our fundraising consultants. So that's, we're moving in a positive direction. Actually, one of the, one of the team from the Architectural Heritage Fund is up north Wales for something else in November, and actually he's calling by the Town Hall on his way down to see what support they potentially can give us. And I've been in touch with the Metropolitan Council Transforming Towns team, and I believe that they indicated that there might be a potentially transforming towns grant available to help us with the match funding element. The next step for the project is to work out the governance of it. We need to be able to show National Lottery that we are really, really good at managing projects, especially one at four point million, four point two million pound level. Our track record, as we, as we know, so we need to, we need to show that we've got robust governance processes in place. We need to show that elected members have got the right level of scrutiny, but also not too much red tape to slow the project down, we need to be making those critical decisions. So my job now for the next month is to work on a paper for you in October, if you don't look at, in terms of the governance. And the intention is that we're submitting the full application in around February time, which gives us some time to get some feedback for the, the final three years. So we're moving in the right direction, possibly.
Are we okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, when, when do you propose to put it in the news, in the press?
I will write it and I'll write it tomorrow, we'll send that tomorrow. Though we've had, we've had the expression of interest approved, my right intent, it's my own style.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Or do you want me to wait?
I would, would have waited. I myself would have waited.
Okay.
At least until we get a little bit more confirmation that, that this is going ahead or that's going ahead.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's gonna be a short, a short sentence, Richard, I would imagine.
Very good question, so that, but it's important to, to make sure that the people in the town know that we're moving forward on it. I don't think it's just on dormant.
I agree.
Yeah.
But we've also not, unfortunately, we haven't got to the next stage yet.
It would be nice to get to another, another stage, Richard, and I know.
We're not bringing that stage until, until February next year, which we have to avoid.
Okay, all right.
I probably should have done something sooner, but, you know, I'm having to wait off if that's what you want to do.
It's entirely up here, I, I think.
It's important the public know that we're not just sitting.
Yes, yes. No, no.
To produce an update.
They're going to know, aren't they? They're going to know eventually, aren't they? But I just don't think there's a lot of news to put in the newspaper right now.
But are we trying to be a transparent council? And we need to do things.
Of course, of course we are, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna be as proactive as I can with our communications, because unfortunately, and the press are here, if we don't, we don't feed the beast, they fill it with stuff that materially we don't, we don't want to be in our newspaper. Again, not saying we want them to hide, but we don't want the potentially negativity that comes with delays or whatever.
Very publicity is good publicity.
Yeah, exactly. Dave's got it.
Sorry.
Dave's got it.
David, David France, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I agree with Council Fitzgerald in that we do need to keep the public in the loop, because we struggle enough, don't we, with getting, getting messages across and take any opportunity we can is my approach. And I do feel like this is, this is quite significant news in terms of it's one major step towards the project being funded, that there aren't many other steps in the process besides the one that's just been successful.
Everybody else? No?
No.
Okay.
Do we need proposal?
Sorry?
I just thought Richard'd be no proposal, but he hasn't.
Eight point two, Oxford Estate.
So this is on the agenda based on last, last, not last month, July's meeting. I, I spoke to Brendan this morning, actually, we had an Oxford Coonty Association meeting this morning in Biville, which was good, they were asking for update. I managed to get Joy Allen to give me a date of when we can next meet to kind of push this forward. But it hasn't gone off the radar, it is still there and we're talking to you to push it forward.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, strategic plan.
As you know, this is what the council's been busy on over, over summer, collecting the thoughts of the stands out there. Two hundred and twenty two responses from people, staff as well, we've come together and responded. Some of you have already done this in the events committee last week, so I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. But basically, it's a chance for you to go through the proposed action plan of what's come out of the survey, in responsibility of this, this committee. So this committee is responsible for quite a lot of the services the council actually provide and being renamed the successor to the Services Committee. So if you turn to Appendix Five, and if you go to page nine, you'll see where the table begins. And it's basically a table with, with some, it's orange lines on it. And it, and it basically, if we just go through the actual actions and you comment what you think on the action. This isn't, this isn't your chance to kind of change, this is your chance to change them, but it's not, you know, you're just feeding into the process. And then basically what I've done, what I've done since the events committee is I've updated this based on their feedback. I'll update this based on your feedback and we'll, we'll go in iterative process, because the plan is that council sign us off on the twenty fourth of September at our meeting, so at least it's been through the committee set and you're, you're all kind of working on the same page. I will note what someone in the events committee said, actually, a lot of what's in here is what we're already doing, but again, we need, you know, it's great to write it down and got an actual plan that we can stick to and properly budget against. The point of a strategic plan is that instead of the work driving the budget, it's the plan driving the budget which drives the work, so it's becoming a more proactive and strategic council rather than just reactive and reacting to things around you. So if you've got to the right place, so the first one is redevelop the town halls, modern community and civic hub. So the back end of that is progress, the expression of interest, the full National Lottery end, large community fundraising campaign, a sponsorship scheme, begin the, begin the works. Second name is revitalise the indoor and outdoor markets. A lot of action under that is trials and themed markets, potentially over year two, so year one is the current year we're in, year two is twenty six to twenty seven, and year three is twenty seven to twenty eight. Improve signage to both markets from car parks, trains and main areas. Support the traders with a joint marketing promotion campaign, assess about financial viability of the Monday market and explore feasibility of adding a second trading day. This is something that came out of the consultation that potentially that could we secure another charter market day from powers? For example, Newtown's got Tuesday and Saturday.
It's taken eight years.
If we can secure another day, it's then another opportunity that we can, we can really enhance the market. Again, it's a, it's a explore feasibility, so we're all, I think.
What's the market day, the outdoor market, it was a Monday and Thursday. I think it lasts, isn't it?
Yeah, so, you know, potentially.
Yeah.
But Thursday was only half day, wasn't it? You know, Thursday was half day.
Okay, there's some discussion over here.
Enhance the town centre environment, so looking at potentially putting something in the empty windows in the town to make them look prettier, with, you know, pictures of Welshful and things like that. Pilot town centre planting and hanging basket sponsorship scheme, you know, we can't do the hanging baskets on the town hall. Is potentially rolling that out to other places based on sponsorship and looking at what planting can do in the town centre to make it look more inviting and pretty and beautiful, that's what people have said to us in the survey, they want our town centre to look like. And then develop a long term action plan for pavement, signage and public spaces, years two to three.
Can I just, you know, that, your front windows, I've actually spoke to the schools about this, about putting children's drawings in them. The schools are quite happy to do that.
Yeah, fantastic.
So I have actually spoken to the schools already about that.
The action for us really is, is basically reaching out to the landlord to get permission and then basically just facilitating it to happen, that type of thing, you know, we're not proposing that we do anything for a major, but that, that, that'd be fantastic. And then, and then the not one for you, that's a place planned, over the page then, maintaining and investing open spaces. All of the all our play areas, pictures, open spaces, income generation. Again, so that's looking at the income generation provided by the, by the clubs, particularly the voting club and all releases around that. Developing a phased upgrade programme, beginning with the most used play areas, but you've already started that one. Again, as Paul Lee said tonight, Dollar Bellin was the upgrade one for this year. I think next year we're looking at Little End, right, slightly forward, which will be cheaper again, because there's less fencing and all sorts of stuff, so that, you know, we're working towards that phased approach anyway. And working with the schools and clubs to align investment, hopefully, you know, leveraging them to get some grants into the green spaces, we'll take that money off them. Press is gone, so that's, yeah, I'll say that. And biodiversity, so in terms of protecting and enhancing the environment, as you may be aware, Phil, you'll be aware of this, based on your training that you've done biodiversity, and the council's subject to something called a Section Six duty. So Section Six of the Environment Wales Act two thousand and sixteen places a duty on the council to basically contribute to the biodiversity of the town. Every three years we're required to produce an action plan. This December is the, is the, the third year of our action plans, actually, we're having to prepare an action plan for next year, so that very kindly gives us an action to audit what we've done in the past three years and implement an action plan for the next, for the next three years. Modern Bailey, redeveloping Modern Bailey is a historical pleasure and recreational space. If you've looked through the consultation, and I don't expect you to read four, forty two pages, but it is a good page turner for bedtime reading. A lot of the public wanted us to do something with the modern Bailey, not just that it's sit rot, which it has been doing, and as you're all aware, we're required to hand it back to the House of States in two thousand and thirty eight in a good condition, good, not specified. Actually, people, people want to see us actually do something with it, so, you know, we want to look at producing some concept designs with the local community. Explore the funding option, you know, I'm not saying it's gonna hit the public purse, you know, there's grants, things that we can get to, to enhance that space and then begin the works, it could be a real gem of, of an outdoor space. People have said use it for all sorts, they said use it for an outdoor event space, they've said use it for dog walking, weddings, splash park, we had so many different options from the consultation, which was fantastic, and then the beauty of the fact that the clubhouse forms part of the scheduling means that you have to go, you have to go through the clubhouse to get into the modern Bailey, the bowl itself, which means it's a perfect ticketed, ticket office to, 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 to make it a ticketed event space that we could, you know, rent out to people or put on, put on outdoor cinema events during the summer and things, but, you know, we're, we're talking, it's, it's a serious project, it's a long time project, we're not going to do anything overnight, but, you know, we need to put it in a plan to make sure we're doing it. A lot of people in the consultation said, do more for dog owners, so improve facilities for dog owners, so looking where our existing dog waste bins are, identifying where we could put some additional bins, launching a public campaign about responsible dog ownership and promoting, you know, responsible dog owners. I'm a dog owner and it really annoys me that I keep reading in the press that all dog owners are bad people and, you know, it's the minorities supporting the majority. I'm sure there'll be dog owners in this room that also feel, feel the same. Look at introduce new dog waste bins next year in underserved areas. Looking at, looking at the, the potential creation of a dog friendly zone or dog exercise area, I know something the council looked at previously. Looking at pioneering initiatives around dog friendly businesses, encouraging shops and cafes to launch for responsible dog owners.
That does happen a lot very tight.
Yeah, it does already, so exactly, it's building on, I think, what already goes on, so. Next one is public toilets, so promoting the fact that our public toilets are actually open, a massive element of the consultation, people said, people, people actually responded saying, I think your consultation is wrong, they're paid for. I can assure you they're not paid for, so there's a massive misconception and misinformation around there about the public toilets we have currently. We need to do some work around that. We need to resolve the outstanding repairs to get the full use of the changing places facility, it is borderline criminal, it is sitting, just sitting there empty. We've actually done some work on that in the last week and week four, which is, which is fantastic. And we need to look at, you know, people said in the, in the, in the consultation, you know, we don't want to pay for public toilets, but if we have to, we will, we will pay, so we haven't put anything in there about that. But they said, speak to, speak to businesses and see if you can promote businesses providing a toilet for the public and, you know, we can put them on a map and say, you know, these are the places you can have, you can have a wee, not, not just using our public toilets, but also the toilets in the town centre.
Nick?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Chair. Can I just ask if there's meetings and work being done regarding the changing place that I could be involved, that it was my baby in the first place?
Also, can, no, nothing's happened since the meeting we had last week with the British Standard, so we'll keep you up to date. Next one is secure the future of the Anne Holloway Day Centre, so to continue negotiations with the charity and proper on the leases, which we definitely anticipate we'll be done in this year. And then strengthen meals and wheels, we heard from the, from the consultation, it's actually might be one of the, besides open spaces, which which might be actually one of the best services we provide, which is fantastic. So looking at strengthening that, actually telling people about it, a lot of people said, I didn't think I was eligible, I thought I had to be old. Not about that at all, it basically could be Deliveroo for Welshful, if we marketed it properly, it could be for anyone, any ages and all that, you know. And we've got a fantastic volunteer network that's helping us deliver that, you know, we employ three members of staff, do the cooking and thing, it's, it's working well at the moment. We're seeing, we're building on the success of it. The council's running for sixty three years, should be running for another sixty three years with us or not, you know, with other council or, or, or a partner, we'll, we'll talk about that more next month. And in terms of the other things, I think the rest is events, so that's not new. Um, yeah, the rest is, the rest is the other things, so that was it.
Okay, that's good.
I was gonna say, you know, should actually report that, isn't it? I thought, then we opened your eyes a little bit when you read it. Okay, okay, so.
Thank you. Can I just say one thing? Let's not forget the Welshful and Llanfair Light Railway. It wasn't even mentioned until page fifteen, and then it just had the initials.
Oh, it's, it's because that's what, as in the questions, I think tourism was a question near the end, so it would have come up near the end of it, of the, of the consultation itself. But you, look, you're right, and if you look at some of the actions that we're doing around tourism, I don't want to take up the event and planning committees remit, but we're, we're looking at expanding the tourist offer we've got, we're working, we're launching a tourism six monthly meeting with all the tourism businesses in the town, look at how we can promote them, that they can promote us as well. Prospero, trying to get the National Trust involved, because they're out there in Allyn, but they've got a lot of visitors that we need to drag into the town centre. Working with the railway on different schemes, I met the new chair of the railway weeks ago and she was really keen to work with us. And she's got lots of different ideas from where they've came from, from the South of England, where councils there have provided like park and ride to the train or they've provided a cheaper transport for residents, you know, there's so many things we could unlock and the train, like it brings thousands of visitors a year. I'm in that, the track of the railway, living in Llanfair, literally opposite end, getting trains to Welshful, I wish they did a service and get me to work on time, but, no, we need to, we need to promote it, and really cherish it.
Okay. Everybody okay? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So thank you for your hard work on that, Rich.
No, no. I was talking, thanks that, you know, we had a really good session as a staff, I hope, or I hope you'd say it was a good session. It was, it was great to get the whole staff team together and flash out where we think we should be going as a, as a council over the next three years. It's great to get them all to one place and, and there was no, there was no arguments, it was the whole, it was great, so.
Hard to believe, but there we go. Okay, we come on to item ten, the date of the next meeting. It will be the eighth of October at six thirty in the chamber. Um, and we're now going to look to go into a confidential session. So I need a proposal that we go into confidential session.